And Mr. Tim Ziegma, who's a seated member. We are going to be excusing Mr. Curtis Holtman, Mr. John Michael, John Michael O'Brien. And there'll be excuse for this one. All right. Okay, so on to the agenda. On commission business, the first up we have is the adoption of the meeting calendar for 2021. Has everyone had a chance to look at the calendar itself?
Can I make?
Yes, Maureen.
So after it was printed and distributed, I may notice that the January meeting was not included on the calendar because it actually is here on the calendar for last year, so she didn't put it on this calendar. Typically, they do run on both calendars.
Yep.
The January 7th meeting was set last year for January 7th, 2021. But typically, the second January meeting Fran let me know was not already set. That would be on January 21st.
Okay.
And then the...
Well, I'm not sure, I'm sorry. If you're joining the commission remotely, please, would you mute your microphones? Because we're hearing some...
Tim's causing trouble.
Paper rustling. All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Now, please continue, Maureen.
And then, so I deleted the meetings that were conflicting with holidays, et cetera, except for the January 6th, 2022 meeting, I think you were going to adjust that. Chairman?
Yes, yeah, because of the holiday, then when people submitting paperwork right before Christmas, we wouldn't be able to do justice. So that's why we've taken off the January 6th, 2022 meeting, and we're just running with the January 20th, 2022 meeting.
Is there a inclination to change the January 7th, 2021 meeting for the same reason?
Um... It's very good, but...
It's actually what made me notice the January 6th meeting next year, but we do have a couple of items that may or may not be moving forward by then, you know.
So do it once.
But I, you're, please look at it because it was a concern that made me do it or ask for 2022.
Well, it makes sense that we could also address the same issue with the 2021 calendar. Because looking at my calendar, the 7th, by the time we get through Christmas, you write into New Year's and you're into the 7th, it just might be too close. What we could do is what you and I had talked about before is it's possible we can cancel that meeting. And if we're in the need of another meeting in those Januaries, we can call for a special meeting. We will still have the 14 days to be able to do that. You know, so I'm going to look to the commission to see what the flavor of the commission would be. Does that sound like a valid suggestion at this point? I see Mr. Wolman nodding. Yeah, okay. And Mr. Bayala? Okay, you got the thumbs up. Diane, nobody's talking up here. Don't do this.
I was giving a thumbs up.
All right, thumbs up, all right, thank you.
Diane. Tim Ziegma gave the thumbs up.
And, okay, thank you for noting that. Tim, you're okay with that? All right.
I'm okay.
Okay, all right, terrific, so then...
Tim's good, I'm good.
All right, and, all right, and Peter, I know that you're on remotely.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, all right. So that's what we'll do then.
So I think you may have to vote to cancel the January 7th meeting because it's already on the calendar.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that for the proposed 2021 meeting schedule, that we cancel the January 7th, 2021 date and add the January 21st, 2021 date to the meeting schedule. And that would be subject to the possibility of using January 7th as a special meeting date.
Okay, terrific, we have a motion, do we have a second?
On the proposed calendar, removing the January 6th, 2022. That's on that proposed calendar.
Okay, and I'll amend my motion to also cancel the January 6th, 2022 date.
Okay, and do we have an amendment? Are we good with the second? I think, Tim, you had the second?
Yep.
Okay, you're fine with that?
I'm fine.
Okay, terrific, all those in favor then?
Okay.
Those opposed, so move. All right, great. Moving right along. I think we have the application and the reduction of the People's United Bank error hopeful standby letter of credit number ISB 000572 for the amount of, for the account of Midsum Group Incorporated for $31,572. Maureen, are we doing with that?
Okay, so we got feedback from the engineering division that, well, let me say, first off, the applicant proposed reducing the amount to $35,000 for the installation of the sidewalk and all the rest of the improvements having been completed. Engineering came back with that the $35,000 would not be sufficient. $100,000 would be what it would take to build the sidewalks, given the inflation of the time period. So that recommendation just came back this afternoon. And I believe the applicant is with us or not with us on the phone with regard to that reduction. The reduction, there are two bonds held.
Yeah, that's a large amount of money.
The sidewalks are the only improvement that staff has noted are not completed, but the letters of credit are expiring. I believe that the... That there is sufficient time, from what I've been told, two weeks' notice for calling of a bond for the bank, that you can wait to act on that until the 17th so that I'm calling the bond for the added amount of the, for the sidewalks.
Okay, so we have the two bonds.
Am I being clear, I'm sorry?
All right, so let me, let me just walk it back a little bit. So we have the two bonds, we have the one at the $31,572, and then we have the second bond, which is the credit number ending with 572, and $116,400. So engineering is saying it's okay for us to reduce the second bond from the $116,000 down to $35,000?
No, no, the applicant was proposing $35,000 would be required for the sidewalks, but engineering is saying no, $100 is required for the sidewalks, to remain for the sidewalks.
Okay, is the sidewalks coming out of the first bond ending with 572 or the second bond?
I think it makes the most sense, so let me just...
Well, the first bond is $31,000, so it'd be $35,000.
And sidewalks were on the, on the $116,000 bond.
Okay, so engineer says it's okay, engineering says it's okay to go down to $100,000 bond? So in other words, we'd only be able to save $16,000?
Yeah, sixteen, so potentially you could release, and I'm sorry, I didn't get this this afternoon to do the math and didn't have the opportunity.
Don't worry.
So the $116,400 could potentially be reduced to the $100,000 and the $31,914 released.
$31,572.
$31,000, what?
$31,572.
72?
Did I invert numbers on my staff report or are you looking at the bond number? I looked at my staff report, so, okay. I might have inverted the number.
No.
I'm looking at the two bonds.
All right.
One bond is...
So, okay, so the, all right, the first, oh, I see where you are, okay, so.
There was an error on our minutes.
On our minutes, good.
$914, and our, our agenda says $31,572, which is...
Oh, well, yeah, okay, that's fine. So I, I just want to make sure that we're releasing the entire bond, the first bond, which is the $31,914. So we're good to let that go. And out of the second bond, we're retaining $100,000, and we're releasing $16,400.
Yeah, we leave to retain $100,000.
So altogether, it's all... Okay.
Reduce so that it became its one hundred.
Okay, we have questions from the commission? Sure.
So should we call these bonds since they're bound to expire?
Well, so that was going to be my suggestion was that if engineering cannot, if the applicant has the opportunity to speak with engineering, they're, have demonstrated, but said to me that they had some quotes to show the work wouldn't require the whole hundred. And so they wanted to discuss that with engineering, they haven't had that opportunity. But Fran has indicated that the waiting to call it till the 17th still gives sufficient time if we want to give them time to work it out and/or re-secure $100,000 prior to calling.
Okay, then let me take it a step further. What happens, we don't meet on the 17th, can we still call the bond or is it time?
I defer to your caution. That is, that's a valid point.
So let me see if I understand you, Mr. Wolman. Do we have to be gathered in order to, in order to take that vote? Or is that...
It could be a virtual meeting, it could be a virtual meeting. Or, sorry, you could call the bond, and if they replace it in time, then it just, the paperwork doesn't end up going through? That's the other option, the way to do it.
Whether to, if they come in.
Maureen, do you have a engineering, a town engineering report on the $31,914 that all the road and paving curb base and everything's in?
I did get that in a very short email. The project is all set except for the sidewalks to be installed on 4-Rod Road.
Okay, and Tim, I need to go back to Mr. Wolman because I'd like him to finish out his thought here.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear any.
That's okay, that's okay.
My concern is, you know, crazy things happen in this whole environment.
Yep.
And I don't want to sit down and have $100,000 stuck. So my feeling would be to call the bond. And as, as Maureen told us, that, you know, they come in with a different number for engineering to review, or if they get a bond to replace this, then we can take that back. But I think we should cover ourselves. If that's the proper administrative way to do it.
I believe that's one of our options.
I, I do believe that is one of your options.
All right, well, all right, so any other questions?
Just trying to understand what we're doing.
Oh, okay.
Are we just talking about the $116,000 to call that one?
Call the $100,000, we agreed to drop it down to $100 for engineering. So the other one was agreed to release it according to engineering, the $31 had changed. So we'll release that and then say we'll call the bond for $100,000.
So I guess my question would be trying to understand this. I apologize because I'm new to all this stuff. It was for, the other one was for $31,914 for work uncompleted at the time there. I'm looking at the, underneath that, it's saying a maintenance bond of 10% would be held for 18 months after completion, assuming that's in the event that something didn't go according to plan. So releasing the $31,000 totally, you're not, you don't have the 18-month retention.
But I think that's where the $100,000 comes in because that you have...
If I may, the project has been completed for much longer than that period of time.
They just haven't asked for the bond.
It's a, it's a project that was begun in, I believe, 2006 and '07, COs were in 2006 and '07. I'm gonna actually, so that brought it up earlier. If I can, sure I can share my screen, hold on.
That's been done a long time.
Everyone. There we go, so it's this, the stream side lane project that's on 4-Rod Road. And the sidewalks were to go on this side of 4-Rod Road to connect up to Winding Meadow.
So then essentially, this $31,000 could have been, they could have asked to have that released a while ago.
Probably by 2010 is my suspicion. I don't know that date it was finished, but it's, those improvements are, landscaping the drives. I mean, they may even be ready for their association to take over and repair them by now. Yeah, that's what sometimes happens.
So, all right, with that, so do we have a motion?
Commissioner Ziegma, I, I don't have a problem releasing the $31,914, but I wouldn't release anything of the, of the $116,000. I would just revoke that until the numbers are settled on. Because this project was supposed to be completed in five years. It's been over five years. So we have to call to revoke the least of the $116,000 something.
Yeah, but from my understanding is that most of the work has been done and what's left is just the sidewalks.
That's correct, and right now, we have asked for $100,000 for the sidewalks. We're talking about $16,400.
The recommendation from staff, so we usually follow staff's guidelines of us.
Tim, did you hear that?
Yeah, I, I heard that, but...
I, I realize your point, I think you're, what you're trying to say is just release one bond and then hold the other bond in its entirety and make them redo that bond.
Well, revoke, revoke the 16, but we have the $16,400. Once the figures of the sidewalks, because the client is saying that the sidewalks will be less than $100,000, and our staff is saying $100,000. So until that figure is, is a steady figure, I would say to revoke the $116,000, have that in, in our coffers. And then once they come up with the sidewalk figure, we can change it then.
Maureen, are they, are they currently in the process of getting a bond in place for the $100,000?
Well, what they, so they just got that number today from engineering.
Okay, so that's no...
So late today, it was, you know, 5 o'clock or so that we secured that number.
All right.
So, and they, and, and I don't see that he's on the phone. He said he was going to join by phone. And if, okay, with Chairman, if they are joined by phone and they can unmute themselves if they want to participate, that would be helpful. They proposed that they have bits that show the number will be significantly less than $100,000 and wanted to talk to engineering about that number because of contractors or what have you. And intended from their initial proposal with regard to them getting notice that the bonds were going to be called, they offered a $35,000 amount. So that, to me, led me to believe they would be supplying $35,000 to replace the bond that's expiring for that letter of credit that's expiring. And now it's a matter of their figures and engineering's figures haven't met yet, but they haven't had the opportunity to meet on it.
Yeah, but engineering is the one that said it was good to go, except and they were happy with it.
Except for the $100,000.
So it could very well be that they're in the process of doing paperwork and looking to re-secure that $100,000 based on what engineering said. And I think, just to your point, Tim, if we start to mess with the numbers at this point, it might be throwing a wrench into the works. So if $100,000 works for engineering, as, as Mr. Wolman did say, I mean, if that's what's engineering is coming back or staff is suggesting that we retain. And the feeling is that's going to be more than sufficient for what we need moving forward to finish out the project. I'm comfortable with that.
So reduction, you're saying reduction to $100,000, but that credit line expires on the 9th of next month.
What we're doing is we're, we're putting into motion, a motion that will be recalling the bond basically for the $100,000 now, which will actually kind of force the action. So that will, will be available on the 17th or the 16th, the 17th or the 16th?
17th.
The 17th is the deadline for them. So this way, if we take an action now and just sort of put it in the hands of staff, then we don't have to have a special meeting, be aware of where they are in their financing to have this virtual meeting. So that's why we're doing it this way.
So, so it is a motion of two things. Reduction to, of $16,400 and revocation, revocation of $100,000.
Yeah.
No, because there's, there's, there's two bonds.
We're going, we're, we're revoke, we're reducing the, the first bond, $31,914. We're, we're, we're not going to revoke that bond, we'll just go expire. But the other one, the upper, the $116,000, we have to vote to reduce it to 100 and then revoke the 100.
Then Chairman, I may make a motion?
Yes. Okay.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to release the bond number ISB 000572 of $31,914 to release that. And also on bond ISB 000573, drop that bond down to $100,000 and revoke that bond subject to staff approval.
Okay, we have a motion.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion, seems like Tim agrees, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Don't miss Diane, Ms. George, he's got a second. So further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so move. All right, so we've taken care of B and C on that. Next up, we have the presentation for QA and M Architectural, Architectural LLC regarding the Berlin Center concept, which is also a concept to me. All right, so who do we have presenting?
Okay, Kat, do we have the digital presentation?
I have it working out, give me a second.
Okay. Oh, that would be Victoria.
Sorry, say again?
Great.
Oh, I, I think it'd be the flavor of the... It was suggested that perhaps we should address the bill permit first because that would be the season short.
I understand.
Or the last time, this way, it's generally getting going. How does, because we would now need a motion to adjust the, to bring forward?
Yes, another suggestion that you'll all receive notice that the applicant or the Military Experience Museum asked for an additional extension due to the fact that they've just retained counsel and would like to hopefully bring their whole package together, I think. So perhaps announce that for anyone who might be that's interested. I do believe we got a couple of calls, we put it on the website as soon as they've gotten it, but I don't know if any of the parties on the line.
So while we're jumping around, we'll just announce that the items that were under public hearing, which was the Military Experience and also the, do we want to address the 404 Berlin Turnpike?
That's up to you, whether you want to address it now or later.
Yeah, well, let's address everything now so that if we have folks who are joining us through the webinar, that you'll know that these two items will not be addressed this evening. The Military Museum has asked for postponement, and that'll be coming up. We're not sure what is going to be rescheduled. It's depending upon the information that they gave through us and then how much we can get through the material itself before we slate them again onto our agenda. And also, we have the project in the 404. This is a zone change, and it's also a special permit for 404 Berlin Turnpike. And that has, that has a lot of, a plethora of information to the point where it's been likened to really warm piece. And with that, I'm not sure how long it's going to take staff to actually get through the information that has now landed on their desk. And I'm not even sure that we have staff that could actually do diligence and disseminate this information. So I guess, you know, I will suggest that perhaps we should hire a consultant and have the consultant actually go through the project, what information brought to us, and work with staff so that we can kind of, you know, comb through it and feather it back a little bit before it comes back to this commission. Now, I do know that this commission has the ability to not only select a consultant, but I understand that the consultant will be paid for by the applicant. And am I doing, am I on target so far?
Yes, so most of this is outlined in a memo that I wrote to all of you, they said well received. And I did discuss it with the applicant who's on, on the line now, in case there are questions. And the regulations outline exactly how the payment works as far as goes into a fund that then the town administers. The town hires the consultant and arranges that, so they are a third party.
Okay.
Could we just take care of one thing at a time now? Because we've got a whole bunch of things that we're talking about right this second.
Yeah.
The first thing we were talking about was adjusting the agenda for, to move the Christian Lane. Ahead of the community center item on the agenda.
Okay.
But we haven't finished that part of business yet. And then maybe we should go to Maureen's memo to make those other adjustments to the memo.
Yeah, and we were just trying to, to help out the people that might be online.
I understand that, I, I think confusing everything.
A couple of motions to make that happen may be appropriate, yes.
You don't want to put this all in one motion? Never mind, never mind, okay.
Well, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to make a motion to make an adjustment to the current agenda to move the item A under new business, fill permit for the City of New Britain to come before us ahead of what is scheduled as item D under commission business.
Okay.
Okay, do you have a motion for...
So we have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Wolman, further discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. Continue motions or do we, okay.
So then, I think Maureen is asking in her memo that we also have a motion to postpone the public hearing for the 404 Berlin Turnpike. And is the second portion of your memo recommending that we hire a consultant on that item?
Yes.
Okay, so I will make the motion to postpone the public hearing for the 404 Berlin Turnpike application and make the recommendation that we hire a consultant for the review of that package.
If I may add one thing to that, to go, so you, you just canceled the January 7th meeting. We may have to dip into extension time to get to the January meeting or, or the meeting as any meeting. That would be the appropriate meeting once the council is defined. So I just want to make that on the record and, and known to all that.
Okay.
That would be happening.
So we, we have a motion on that, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wolman for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
What? Tim just said that.
Oh, okay. All right, okay, so that's all settled. All right, let's go back, let's, let's look at the bill permit for the City of New Britain. Okay. Hi, welcome.
Can we come up there?
Sure, I mean, we have a microphone right here.
Okay.
Only there, so if you want to use that for a name address. We'll go from there, thank you.
But it looks like that, I'm sorry, but if I may, it looks like that applicant is still on the line. But I think that was a clear, a clear motion. But I think that was clear, a clear motion regardless.
Okay, alright. Alright, hi.
How you doing? I'm Mark Maarian, the Director of Public Works for the City of Britain, with me, Rob Crowder, he's our city engineer. We also have Jennifer Burke from GZA, she's our environmental consultant and consultant for the driving project. And I believe Eric Barbieri, he's our Park and Rec Director, is also on the table. So the, the fill permit that we submitted is related to a driving project we're doing in Stanley Quarter Park. I'm not helping, I'm not sure who you are with Stanley Quarter. I feel like most of you are very familiar with it. If you drive by anytime recently, you realize, especially in the summer, that the project that really needs to be dragged has for several years. So we've been working on a driving project. We did, we hired GZA, we did environmental testing of the soils and, uh, lessons. And determined that they're very innocuous soils, they're benign. And if you have questions about the soils themselves, Jennifer Burke is available. So we, when we found out the, the soils themselves were pretty easy for reuse, we approached Connecticut deep about using the Christian Lane landfill as a site to bring them to. We weren't sure, um, deep itself isn't always very open to having you use the closed landfill, but they were in, in this case. They, they thought it was a very good idea for us to bring the material to Christian Lane. So, um, touring that avenue, we had several meetings with them, then we're starting to harmonize with them. What the project involves with the fill permit is it's about sixteen thousand cubic yards of material from Stanley Quarter Park. We put in that we'd be bringing all the material to the Christian Lane landfill. Our, our plan, and I think this really speaks well to the soil itself, is to use as much as we can possible back in Stanley Quarter Park and just do some regrading. At Stanley Quarter Park, we didn't get the fill permit like that, we submitted the fill permit like we'd be bringing all the material here. You don't expect that to be the case, but, but even if it's not, there's going to be a lot of material brought here. The parcel that we're talking about is in Christian Lane, it's five forty Christian Lane. It's located pretty much behind Berlin Sand and Stone, which is the old construction. Parcel is a forty-two acre parcel. The area that we're talking about.
I'll get that.
The top of the landfill, if you've been up there, it was sort of, um, it really needed a regrading. It was, that landfill was also closed in the mid-seventies, settling has occurred. We're, our, our plan is to bring the, the material up to the top portion of the landfill to three and a half, just over three and a half acres. We would be doing the filling in one acre, one acre increments at a time. Would raise the overall grade about three foot over the, over the force of the whole project. For a trucking route, like pretty much come down seventy-two, if you don't affect Christian Lane, it wouldn't be, you know, very, it wouldn't be a lot of impact on town roads or anything like that. It would get off the highway, it would get on Christian Lane, drive down Christian Lane through, through the site. Let's see, we are proposing a driveway to access the landfill. I know, uh, I, you know, we're, we're, we've done enough construction, we know with Calcell, you know, my Calcell would, they're intending to put the driveway in, but I know my Calcell, as I said, we could also use the driveway if we, we wanted. But our permit includes a driveway and a between this apron, which is a requirement of the town. We plan on, planning on bidding the project and hopefully getting into construction late summer. And the project would really be starting next fall. Expecting to be about a one-year project.
Maureen, where exactly is this on Christian Lane?
Okay, here we are, so here's Route nine on the map. And if you were to go north, um, pass on, on Christian Lane, get off Route nine or, or go up Christian Lane, heading towards New Britain, you pass, um, Demming Road, then you pass Willowbrook Road, the CPW, I guess that's the right initial, are over here. On the, on the right, left-hand side of the road, or the west side of the road, on the right-hand side is this property. And it goes from Christian Lane up here, I'm sorry, I can't make this little guy go away without unhighlighting it. But this is the landfill, the total landfill site. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, but I believe this area here is where the three points, six acres is that they're going to be impacting with the driveway coming in next to what was a railroad spur that is Town of Berlin land, you know, it'll come in from Christian Lane there. The total site does go out to Demming Road. But they won't be accessing that way. There's the Madabastic Junk Line, comes across Demming Road there, and then they have an easement that goes up through this property on the eastern side. There's also a CLMP or a resource or whoever owns that easement now, but the power line easement that goes along this side as well, near these wetlands, the, the, the Willowbrook, that goes far, on the far east side of the property. And this is, I'm gonna actually, now that you've seen the whole thing, I'm gonna zoom in a little closer to the area of impact. And then just north of there, you'd, you'd be going to the, into the ground. Understand. Just up above and then we can.
Lot of benefit, because we're doing, we're, we'd be, it's closing in the seventies and as we're working with heat on the closure now, it would be brought up to closure standards of two thousand twenty rather than nineteen seventy. But it'd be regraded, you don't want landfills that are, have depressions in them, because then you have water settling into a landfill. It would be great if the water shoots off of it. And we ultimately plan, just like we're working on a Demming Road, to do a solar project up here. So that's our close closures. One other important thing about this is that all the site, the site has very little frontage on Christian Lane and a portion of that, of the site that we're talking about, you really can't really see from Christian Lane, it's behind Berlin Sand and Stone. So it's like, just the filling itself is gonna have really no impact on anything visually.
Questions from the commission?
My only concern would be the timing on the trucks, that road. You know, I'm looking, you're just gonna start in potentially August of next year, hopefully where we pass COVID, really back to normal. Having worked at North East Utilities and used those roads quite frequently to come home. There is quite a bit of traffic in the morning and in the evening, so the seven to five bothers me a little bit. Not being able to control how many trucks might come through at seven or how many trucks might come through at four thirty, that could present some, or present some traffic issues. So that's my only concern on the whole thing. If you limited the trucks coming potentially like eight to four, I, I think that would be a lot better than seven to five.
But is that even in our purview to? I don't think that's anything to do with.
That, that Berlin Town is probably the biggest truck trail road in town. You got Copart, you have CWPM.
Yeah, but now you're gonna be at, but they're calling for like fifty trucks a day, right?
Asking about it yesterday.
Fifty trucks or fifty loads?
Trucks, trucks. So we were, I mean, basically ten hour a day. Five trucks an hour. There's one car estimate, so that's the fifty trucks a day. So five trucks an hour is what you're talking about from, so, you know, for every hour. It's not, I mean, we're not, we're not talking, it's not like there's gonna be a hundred trucks there an hour.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we're not talking a significant amount of truck traffic.
I think also one other thing to be considering, that they would be taking a right, not a left, and vacuuming up traffic.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I mean, as, you know, if you go, as, as CWPM generates traffic, some days it's busy, some days it's not. And, and as I said, I don't, I don't think it's really in our purview to take when the trucks come and go. Commercial quarters.
And certainly if you're getting complaints, or you could call us and, and we could make an adjustment. That's, that's always the.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Zigmont. The sand gravel place, Calcell, I guess it is, has infringed on the top of that property. And as one, that was a concern that when the stone gravel came in and I'm, hopefully that that's gonna be corrected when we start filling up the top of this property. You can see the stuff left on the hill there, or writing a picture there. So that's all infringed on, on the City of New Britain property, which they, they were not supposed to do.
I think they've since moved the containers, um, this is a two, probably the two thousand nineteen aerial, so the containers have been moved.
Okay.
Okay, well, I just, you know, want to make sure that when you cap it, you cap it all properly. And that area that was being used by the sand gravel to, you know, be capped too, same as the rest of.
We've taken several actions which cause, uh, Berlin Sand and gravel making sure they stay off our property. I mean, it hasn't been a, been a bit of an issue for us. And I dropped in a letter fairly recently to them, to, to them, and we, this has been something that we pursued.
Where exactly is the property lying for you and Colcel?
If you, if they're on here, I mean, the GIS, this is faring speak, you know, it's only as accurate as the GIS is, but the.
What's all the fill to the right then?
That's the, that's.
They actually were just a portion of the, of our landfill. I mean, so they.
That was back in two thousand seven before.
Yeah, correct.
No, they built buildings also. So, but they're over their property, all the fill.
There was supposed to be a fence line there with the sand and gravel place, and I don't think that was placed then. You know, basically, uh, keeping them off that New Britain property. You know, look at, look at.
Thinking it was gonna be worse, a fence on them, that'd be great.
Well, I, I think that was in approvals, it was some, some kind of barrier, fence, trees. I remember what the barrier was, but there was kind, some kind of barrier on approvals. So I would say that Town of Berlin should be looking to see what that approval said for fencing whatever on to that property. Then, then that's could be caught, capped properly then, if it's, you know, if New Britain just goes cap, cap it properly.
Ideally, if we put, like, cover that with solar panels, that really solves the problem, so that's whatever.
Well, that's true.
Our real hope is.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, so. Said, um, do we want to have a motion?
I think Steve does.
Steve does. Okay, so you go ahead.
Make a motion to grant the fill permit for the City of New Britain to fill in plus or minus sixteen thousand cubic yards. Not to be like anyone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolman has the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Rogan, further discussion, questions?
Just a question on the motion, if you have comments.
Oh, the motion, does it include staff comments?
Absolutely.
Are, is that an amendment, so I'll take that as amendment, an amendment on the second?
Amendment on the second.
Alright, then further discussion, all those in favor? And those opposed? Okay. Good night, good night. Now, we're gonna circle them back and we're gonna bring forward presentation for the QA and M Architecture LLC regarding the Berlin Community Center concept. This is just a concept, right? Okay. Alright. Yeah, maybe we'll take them both off, yay.
Again, my name is Tom Markary and I'm Principal with, with America, Kerry Malatour. We've been engaged by the town, under the grant with Connecticut to explore the feasibility of developing a new community and senior center in the Town of Berlin. We have been working over the last, I believe, six months with the town to develop a program based on statements of need developed by senior center in the Park and Rec Department. Identify a series of sites, we've gone through a series of site selection criteria. The town has four sites they asked us to look at. Actually, Maureen, if I could get you to skip forward a little bit.
I was gonna say, you're gonna have to give me an instruction, what screen you want to be on.
We don't have to tie that. That's perfect. So the town has four town-owned sites they asked us to explore. As potential location for a community and senior center, those being the Town Hall Campus Site, Kensington Road, the site. Berlin Turnpike, which is Sage Park Site. Six Hundred Spruce Brook Road, which is a Pistol Creek Site. And Patterson Way, which is directly across the street, parcel directly across the street from the high school. We went through a rating and ranking and evaluation process. Of the four town-owned sites, we ranked Patterson Way Site highest because of its location. A lot of factors, centrality to the population, direct adjacency with the high school, availability for intergenerational programs, availability for utilities, and a series of other components. It's not an exact science, but of the four sites, it established itself as the best possible site for all. Um, this was the evaluation matrix we put together. And this is in our packet, I presented about fifteen, I have copies in the packet for everyone on this commission. The reason we've come tonight is we are now in the process of soliciting public information. And our process requires us to have a series of public information hearings wherein we solicit feedback from the general public and use that feedback to modify the study. As a part of the public information process, we have, we are presenting to different boards and commissions. Senior, a Quicken Ageing, a Park and Rec Commission, Town Council. I'm asked to be informally heard by your commission so that we can solicit some feedback about our design option. There's a lot of information you'll see here tonight. I don't need all of your feedback tonight. Any comments or ideas you have about this, I would just request you forward to Maureen and she can get that information on to me. Working with the statement of needs, we've developed a program that's approximately seventy thousand square feet. In simple terms, what this involves is taking the current community center program and the current senior center programs, co-joining them in a new facility where we realize about fifteen thousand square feet of efficiency once they start sharing program spaces. And then there is add additions to their program of a gymnasium and an aquatic center. That statement of need was established by those departments and approved by the Town Council for our exploration. Next one, uh, next page, go down. Yeah, there's a site, site evaluation, okay, diagram. So in order to evaluate, once we selected the Patterson Way Site for further investigation, we started to do some diagrams about, to determine a footprint for the building. Patterson Way Site has unique components about it, number one. Number one, it has significant amount of topography. From the road to the very rear of the site is about between thirty and forty feet of grid change. Because of this, at this site, we diagrammed a concept, thank you, that would be two stories in nature. The upper floor, which would be accessed from the high side of the site, would house the majority of senior center programs. And the lower level of the center, as you can see on the right in blue, would house primarily the recreation programs. What this will allow us to do is to put all the senior programming on one level, so seniors can use a single floor program. It also allows us to capitalize on the site, um, topography to bury the larger program elements, the gymnasium and the pool into the topography. So at the lower level, you'd have pool, gym, and then fitness programming as well as parks and rec. It also allows two separate entrances connected by a central spine, so that each program has its own unique identity and entrance way. So senior senior center entrance would be at the upper level, and the recreation entrance would be at the lower level. Next slide, please, Maureen. So when you look at the site, this is the Patterson Way Site, Patterson Way is to the right. North in this diagram is to the left. The high school is at the right of the screen directly across the street from this site. And then the topography falls off to the back. At the left, or what we call the rear of the site, the lower portion of the site, there is a floodplain area. We would not be able to develop that portion of the site. That site would be reserved for recreation. But you can see the sun travels from the top of the page, which is the east, to the bottom of the page, which is the west. So taking these factors into consideration and our diagram, we proposed a layout, which would be seen on the next page. The layout would take the building and nestle it into the nook on the western side of the parcel. This would allow us diagrammatically for parking at the upper level, directly across the street from the high school, parking at the lower level. And then a patio, exterior patio or or activity areas for the senior multifunctionary that face to the east, so that morning sun would fill that, and then in the evenings for multifunction programs, they would face and it would be backlit. The benefit to this configuration also allows us to maintain the greatest distance to the neighborhood from the neighborhood to the to the east. It also allows us to maintain the existing buffer, the existing tree line buffer, which we would augment. Again, this is all diagrammatic in nature, it's just our ideas. Any kind of a final development would come as a formal submission. Uh, next page. Yep, that'll work.
It did work.
Um, this is what a a harder site plan might look like. Um, this was prepared by to design our site civil engineer. And again, you can see the building in a similar configuration. At the lower side of the site is Patterson Way, there would be formal entrance and parking at the high side of the site. Covered drop-off for the senior center entrance, which is, um.
Get up out.
You know, but is is here. Drive aisle pass and entrance for recreation at the lower portion of the site. And then to the left, this isn't fully configured in an ideal way yet. We'd actually have a third entrance to the building. This would be a discreet entrance for human services, food pantry, human services program. The only thing, the only program that was not in the statement of needs was the food pantry and the human services program offices. These offices are integral to senior center activities, recreation activities. They all fall under the same umbrella. We recommend it to the town that those services be at the community center. They generally are at community centers throughout the state of Connecticut. So we recommend a a third discreet entrance. So patrons in the community that use human services don't have to go through the community center. This is a floor plan of what the main level or upper level of the center might look like. You would have a covered entrance at the bottom of the page. This is the upper level entrance. North is straight up the page here. When you come in, there would be a central cafe, which is the socializing hub of the center. And it would be at the end of the commu-, excuse me, a two-story communication gallery that connects all of the programs. To the left is senior center administration, common bathrooms, and then senior center activity classrooms. Fitness and game rooms are off of the gym, and they would look, they would have direct access to the blue walking path. That is a walking or jogging, um, circle at the upper level of the gymnasium. From this level, you'd be able to look into the gym. All the way to the left in pink are the human services and food pantry program. On the right side of this level are the four multifunction classrooms in pink directly adjacent to an exterior patio. These are currently similar to the multifunction programs at the community center. These would all be connected together and separated by operable partitions, so that you could have one large multifunction space that would seat somewheres between two hundred and fifty and three hundred patrons for sit-down meal or a large gathering. This gives not only flexibility for all of the senior center programs, but also any community functions, meeting meetings, as well as, like many other community centers in state Connecticut, it would offer opportunities for revenue generation. For instance, senior community centers like West Hartford, they rent out their multifunction hall to members in the community for wedding receptions or parties, et cetera. In the, oh, that's great. In the upper right-hand corner would be the arts and crafts programs on the north side of the building. And in the bottom right-hand corner, which I don't know if you can scroll down, Maureen, would be the kitchen space in gray. It would be a full-service kitchen, which would be capable of handling meals that are brought in as a warming kitchen. It would be a catering kitchen, and it would have full commercial kitchen capacity. That gives the community center flexibility to be used many different ways over its fifty-year lifespan. At the lower level of the center, which would enter off the rear or the north side of the site, directly to the right would be parks and rec offices that would oversee the lower level of the gallery. And then in the in the middle to the right would be the weights and cardio and fitness programs, which are big programs that currently exist not only for parks recreation, but also for key components of state-of-the-art senior centers. And on the left side of the center would be a proposed new aquatic center, which would have an eight-lane competition pool. Um, behind that would be a ther-, to the left would be a therapy and activity classroom pool with a, with room in the rear for spectators. In in between both programs would be male, female, and family locker rooms. And directly across the corner for that would be a new community use gymnasium that has a full high school courts in both directions and divider. We've put together a a model of the site and what the massing of the building might look like in relation to the adjacent, the massing of the adjacent homes. And Patterson Way and the high school, you can see that because we're building the building into the site, that the mass of the building is actually fairly low. From Patterson Way, it will maintain a one-story appearance. Additionally, in between the pool and gymnasium program boxes, which are sort of in the upper right there, we will have a well that will sit over the locker rooms below. The locker rooms below will be one-story. And in that well is where we will hide all of the large mechanical equipment. Gym and pool have huge mechanical equipment components. They wouldn't be rooftop, they would be hidden so that the neighbors can't see them. This is a concept view of what the building would look like from the upper level. This would be the senior center entrance. I'm looking from the parking area at Patterson Way. Next page. As we head down from the upper level entrance towards the back of the site, you can see the grade falls away. This is the raised patio that's off the multifunction room. Looking to the east, and then, and then when you get to the rear of the site, this would be the proposed entrance to the recreation floor. And at this elevation to the right, you can see that's the aquatics center component of the plant. Not scrolled down. Thanks. We have some, also in here are some concept images that would just give you an idea of how the program might come together. This is the cafe space as you enter the building. To the right is the kitchen and soft classroom. To the left are the recreation activity classrooms. Directly behind us is the senior center administration. Then you can see further down the hallway is the grand hall that collects all the programs. Next page. This is a view past, past the cafe, looking down the grand hall. On the upper right is the multifunction gallery. To the left, you can look into the gymnasium and then the activity hallway. Continue. This is a view of that same space from the other end, from the north end of the corridor, near the parks or near the arts and crafts space. And then this is a view of what the center would look like when you came in in the recreation area. The aquatic center is to your right, and parks and rec transaction windows are to your left. This is a concept view of what the community use gymnasium would look like. Lots of natural light from above. Oh, that's okay. And this is a view of what the aquatics center would look like. So that's what we've been working on for the last six months. As I mentioned, we're now in the process of trying to do public information meetings. So because of COVID, we haven't been able to actually have any public information meeting. So we've been using the forum, digital forum, meetings such as yours, help get this, get what we've been working on out for the general public. We scheduled for public information meetings for December, but they were recently canceled by the town for fears of public safety. I think this is a process that's going to be drawn out further than was originally intended. Originally, the goal was to be a referendum in the in this past November. That's really unviable. This process requires a lot of public input, investiture from the community. So as we go into two thousand and twenty-one, we will be scheduling public information meetings, but I don't know exactly when that's gonna happen. In addition, we've generated a website that will be linked to the town, town's webpage, that will have all of the information, all of our study information. And because we couldn't do public information meetings, we recently produced a video. It will be approximately a five-minute video that presents this project and all of the information. That will be on the website as well, and it will be an introduction. It will have a question and answer page and an area for the general public to make comments. So that's where we are. Any ideas you have, or you have in in the coming future, would be welcomed. And obviously, as this gets developed, someday we'll come to you as a a formal sort of submission.
Thank you. Questions?
Just one really. The first thing that comes to mind for me when I'm looking at this is school campus and all of the safety requirements that the schools are required to abide by now. And so I'm curious if a facility like this is required in any way to have similar safety considerations as part of the structure. So like what I'm getting at is the windows and the as far as the visibility from outside in and the security of the rooms that people are gonna be occupying. I I just don't know what the requirements are, but it just seems to me like that shouldn't be part of the overall design concept.
So that's a great question. And as we get forward, go forward, we'll explore more of that. Certainly, security is a key component. Facilities like this, one of the reasons we were engaged is because we designed more than twenty-five community centers across the state, different varying levels. Security is a big component. Certainly, you'd have CCTV and door access. But there's always sort of the balance between will this be a community facility or a community educational facility? Will it be controlled by the town in simple terms or by the Board of Education? In theory, these types of centers are usually controlled by a community. So it's a community building, and, you know, operation and oversight fall under the the guise of the community proper, which is nice because it gives communities the flexibility of overuse and programming in the gymnasium and pools that is sometimes restricted by when those facilities fall under the oversight and the requirements of the educational buildings and programming. For instance, and sometimes it's difficult to program community events at a school because schools have lots of restrictions for general public use, particularly during school hours and oversight. There's security issues, maintenance issues. So a lot of communities we do work with want these centers to be run by the community. However, here, I think one of the components that the community is sort of lacking is the aquatics facility. And that may arguably be a bigger driver even than the gymnasium. As this project goes forward, there will be a price tag for this, and the town will have to decide are to a facility that's this big or not big, or will we call elements from the program? At the end of the day, the aquatic center may be something that that ends up, you know, staying because you don't have that program. While the aquatics facility is something that really provides an opportunity for intergenerational programming and educational programming, because it's something that you don't have at your high schools right now. So if this becomes a component, aquatic center becomes a component that's part of the, what's said, educational program formally, then we would have to introduce the specific specific security and programming and planning elements that are required by the, you know, school facilities. However, that might provide opportunity for reimbursement from the state to pay for the construction or part of the construction of that component. That's something that we'll be discussing with the community. That's something that we'll be discussing with the community. So that's a super long answer to um your question about will there be security? Yes, but will be, we just, at this point, I don't know to what degree that's gonna be incorporated.
That uh and just to keep in mind that um it depends on if if. The decision is for the property to be the O E property. The ability of the town to maintain the grounds is affected by the. For the um community center. Not being able to be able to control. Last the way they are.
Great. So in most communities, what we what we see is that it's a community facility. But it can be used for, you know, educational programming resource. For instance, swim beads and swim lessons and all sorts of such as that.
So the first, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The first thing that I think of is how many kids are gonna be parking in the parking lot? To cut across the street instead of parking in student parking.
Well, that's another great issue. Obviously, having program elements directly across the street from each other. Any final solution would have to take a look at that corridor um from a traffic perspective. And is there, are there traffic calming um components in this zone? As well as how do pedestrians make that sort of transaction across the street? That's that's a key issue.
You said your firm did twenty-five of these in the state, but you don't want this size.
So we have done a very large one.
That was something similar to this.
Um, well, let me make that simpler for you. Municipal buildings today of this nature cost somewheres between four hundred and five hundred dollars a square foot. Um delivered via a construction manager delivery method. So rule of thumb, I I use four hundred because there's lots of decisions that can be made to reduce the cost or increase the cost. Additionally, Berlin is a very unique town in their project delivery method and they do most of the projects design build. That yields some efficiencies, but simple math, um the size of the building, four hundred dollars a square foot plus any extenuating costs or site condition, et cetera. Part of our task is to get public feedback, reduce or increase the size of the facility and do a formal cost estimate and develop a budget prior to ultimately going to referendum.
We live in a town where people have a problem with their garbage going up by hooks, so.
No, I.
I'm just the messenger.
Yeah.
Backs, long, put backs at each other.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I I'm having to to with a project and I think it's it's I I'm limited by.
I like it.
By the atmosphere. I just really wonder in in this world that we currently live in with this COVID and social distancing and masks and everything. We're looking at building the seventy thousand square foot building. Right? And so it's bringing all these people together. And I know that a lot of my neighbors have put swimming pools in because they don't want, they want their kids to be able to have activity. And now they're investing in homes to give their kids safe activity. So I sometimes wonder when I'm looking at a project like that. I'm wondering if we're, i- if it's if it's a reality for us, I guess. And and we don't know that because we don't know how the town feels about it. We just spent a lot of money renovating this high school. And so I I think that that the opportunity of the renovation, they had a chance to put a pool.
They did and they chose not to.
They chose, they chose not to, yeah. But now we're coming with this pool that's gonna be across the street, might be a four to B, might not. And and then we have racing lanes and then you have to think about a senior who just wants to go for a therapeutic swim. Now is competing with forty high school students that all have to be on the swim team. They all have to practice because they've gotta meet. And and I could, I I in my mind, as you're going through this this concept, I see different groups being pushed out and and forced into a corner while others dominate. So that's another aspect of it, uh I haven't quite wrapped my head around it, so.
That's a great point.
Do we need two pools down?
A great point, I mean. It's complicated, that's why you have a therapy pool, but um the car, yeah, I don't know.
No, no, I mean, it's just hard for me to imagine that the town is really is. And and I'm not sure what gave birth to this and I don't even know that that's really my proper place to have a discussion with you. I mean, I I'm looking at the concept and uh you know.
So what gave birth to this is the state, your state rep um solicited a grant. I I don't, I don't have the exact number, I believe it was seven fifty. To explore this possibility. To research it, identify what it would cost, um what could we do? And at the end of the day, bring it to the general public. Is this something that you want? Realistically, you know.
Hold on, I'm just curious. You know, and I'm just assuming things to happen. In a normal process, we've done this in the past, from this stage to completely, what's a normal time for?
So concept stuck, just concept, light bulb to ribbon cutting is usually between three and five years. We generally see it quicker, like from this stage, we see it closer to three years. Usually it takes about a year to get the project sort of designed and supported and and approved municipally and um pass a referendum. It takes about a year to design it and detail it and put it up to bid it and and then, or let's say nine months.
Yeah, I got.
About a year and change to build it. I know this has been in the minds of people who were more than that. With COVID, um I think it will, you know, probably find itself closer to a four year process if it's if it's, you know, ultimately approved.
I can get the kids to the classroom. But anyway, that's that's the the world we live in. I mean, okay, so what do we need to?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Just just out of curiosity, what were the the factors that kind of made the sage park less desirable?
So if you go, we go back, um number one, it was the location wasn't bad. But it wasn't the best location and it, you know, brings everybody into that. That's, you can go into the that chart, yeah. Oh, I don't have, I don't have the, yeah, I don't have the one for, um, so. There was less pedestrian access or almost no pedestrian access in that location. It forces everybody to use the Berlin Turnpike corridor to get there, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. But it makes it harder to get access to that particular site. There was, there were some, well, in general, that portion of the site, um the development of it was was simpler. It's just a flat site and there's recreation adjacent to it, so those were beneficial components.
What do you, what do you consider to be the recreation available, like the tennis courts or whatever?
Well, any types of recreation, there's no specific recreation, a a lawn area so you can have lawn um or activities. As long as there's outdoor area of some sort. In the case of seniors, for the most part, we want walking areas. You know, that was, that was, that's a good question. At both sites are viable, um we just felt that Patterson Way was also closer to what we call sort of, you know, Main Street, Farmington Avenue. So it's adjacent to the the town's commercial district. I I know that Berlin Turnpike is, you know, a commercial district.
Our so-called downtown.
It's, yeah, different on downtown. So in terms of revitalizing downtown and the T W D area, the location of the community center is good there. And then directly adjacent to the high school, we felt offered um many more communal um opportunities for intergenerational programming. Some of this is subjective, um.
Yeah, in in general, I mean, it, you know, it kind of makes sense a little bit, but there are, there are times of the day where lower lane and there's three schools in that vicinity, it's like, don't go to work that way because of all the buses and stuff like that.
Yeah, the buses.
Avoid lower lane, you avoid going by McKee and Willer. Takes you forever to get out because every parent's driving your kids to school.
Buses are ready.
Crazy.
Understood and and certainly.
I wouldn't wanna live on that road.
Not when you're.
It's already dead now.
Nah, you're good.
I usually do that.
Haven't even had a drink. I don't know how much the neighborhood's gonna be really in favor of all this stuff going on, but. There's a lot of houses in that area.
Yeah, because this is the first time I'm I'm hearing about it, so.
Again, a lot of people in the community have not heard of this. We're just starting out with our public outreach. I suspect there are gonna be a lot of people that'll like it, a lot of people that don't like it.
Yeah.
That's fairly normal. We try and incorporate as much as we can, it's positive for the community. And then, you know, at some point, it gets presented to the community. Community will decide.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Can I, Commissioner Ziegma, can I uh say something here?
Sure.
Okay, uh conceptually, the uh I see the need uh and and the pool and all the features of the building. Knowing uh Sunnington's uh building, a new senior center that they just put in uh Wallingford and a couple other senior centers, I could see that some of the interior of this building is similar to other senior centers. So I I know you probably uh have designed those twenty-five other senior centers. But a a brick building like this, uh I don't know if that's the concept that we would look for in town. We have been leaning towards more of a colonial look, uh even with Stop and Shop, downtown Kensington Village or they call it Steel Steel Still Village now. But that's what we're leaning towards, so conceptually of the the looks of the building. I think we would be, it would be more flavor of the town if it was towards a colonial type looking thing. Instead of the school next door, basically with this look, you're looking at a mirror picture of the school across the street. So uh, you know, I don't know if the conceptual look of the building would be in favor of with the town.
I think that's very fair feedback and certainly we take that into consideration.
Yeah, I'll have something that I think you're gonna have to feel about the.
Yeah, I I I ha- I happen to love the 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 Calendar House in Sunnington, I've been through that building. And similar facilities inside the building uh with the pool and everything else. So, you know, conceptually, the building looks a lot prettier than than industrial life, you know?
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lauren.
All right, okay, um I think that's, I think that's a wrap.
A couple of things and I'm sorry for.
All right, okay, no, 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 that's. Nice, good night, thank you.
Go back to meeting itself. Chris Edge had the uh asking if I would distribute his. To the, it went to the zoning board of appeals at their last meeting and he asked to distribute it to the zoning commission for this meeting with regard to um inquiries that he's field fielded a number of to change the zoning regulation that um has to do with the distance between gasoline filling stations. And right now, we have a fifteen hundred foot um distance between gas, any gasoline station to another unless they were pre-existing. We do have a couple of cases where they're pre-existing um and closer to each other, I believe. But generally speaking, that's the regulation. And whether there is an appetite to use a term like here sometimes um to explore reducing or eliminating that uh criteria. I do think he's on the phone, he was, yeah, he was on the line. And he may have more to say about it um or get any feedback that he we could get from the commission so that we can either pursue looking into those.
Evening, actually, I I I am here. Yes, I had been contacted by a couple folks, including one developer, um for us to look at that. In the marketplace right now, gas stations have become very much like CVS and Walgreens, they wanna be near each other. The fifteen hundred feet, I couldn't tell you why it's there, um but it is. Right now, a couple different projects that could be on the books are coming in soon. The fifteen hundred feet would make them a lot more challenging. So it's just to see if this commission would have an interest in looking at that, whether it's modifying it or getting rid of the fifteen hundred foot um language itself. So that was really the reason for the discussion, brought it by the commission to get their thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Is there anyone who has any kind of feedback about it?
I have one other.
Yes.
And the reason that it also went to the zoning board of appeals is because many of you are sure aware, but some of you may not be, that location approvals in order to get their state licensing goes through the zoning board of appeals. So the zoning board of appeals is the one that uh administers the distance requirement. And because they look at it so often, that, you know, their feedback is to how and why and and concerns, I guess, they've looked at many years, so. And that's why it went to them as well.
Yeah, and I think going back through time, and maybe Tim, you can help me out with this. I think that kind of came to fruition because um at at the time, it seemed that like that was the only businesses we were attracting on the turnpike or into town. And we were trying to, leave the flavor of the commission back way, way back when, was to try to to draw other businesses rather than gas stations after gas stations. And I think that that's why that was put into play. I'm not sure. I'm not sure which way uh what we should entertain at this point. It seems to me that some folks have already placed their businesses based upon that regulation. And I and I don't know if changing ministry is um gonna help or hurt us.
I just really kind of depends on where.
Yeah, where they put an empty piece of. Empty piece of lead or knock something down or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Pearl Turnpike. You knock down a hotel, put up a gas station, I mean, kind of doing better and what's it?
I don't want to see where gas stations are. Can we do it? Allowed to do a corridor and say we can have this regulation only in like our downtown core? And then it could expand out on the turnpike, can we even do that?
So just like any other zone, you can have regulations that pertain to certain zones and not to other zones. So I don't see where that would be an issue. I mean, in the logistics of it, there may be some nuances that would have to be worked out and particulars that. I mean, in the logistics of it, there may be some nuances that would have to be worked out and particulars that can't, um, that, that would have to be universal, but I think, um, that is certainly acceptable. We have, you know, your bulk of a building changes from one zone to the next, and, and the use itself is allowed some places and not others. So I think that is, um, an instance where that is possible.
Yeah, and, and this is Chris again. Um, this likely will be brought in by a private, private party. Um, uh, the town, um, and this, my bone opinion is the town should not go forward with making this decision. It would be a private party coming in to request the change. So it's more of finding out kind of your thoughts on it. This is not something either Maureen or I want to take on. I don't think it's our place. If somebody says, hey, I want to change it, they can go through the text amendment process formally. But it's really just to kind of feel out with you, um, so I can give them some headway or idea, uh, uh, next steps for them.
Can we ask where it is?
Um, it is on the turnpike, I can tell you that at this point. That's really, that's really the target area that they're looking at. I don't see gas stations going into any other areas of town at this point. I, I don't think it's economical for them, but I know gas stations are a, and, and some context. It's a lot more than just a gas station. What they're looking at now is, um, kind of a Cumberland Farms model, but even upscaled from that. Um, literally, they have fresh foods, um, fresh markets, not a fresh market, but having real food there. So it's almost a mini supermarket. And these projects also are a major, uh, impetus for getting large projects going because it really helps to make a project work. So that's why this, this group is looking at it. Um, I'll, I'll leave you to discuss. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I, I would like to clarify something, um, for Commissioner Wolman, that for instance, in the, um, Farmington Avenue, or in the CCD two zone, we have very particular, um, gasoline filling station regulations um, that allowed when, um, and they were written very particularly with regard to when they integrated with a grocery store. And you may remember that, just because.
Thanks for reminding me.
I didn't think, um, that, I don't know how long that project's been. And, so they are written that way. Regularly.
All right, well.
So, uh, uh, on highways and, uh, something like the Brolton Turnpike, gas stations are usually on a corner of a street, of another street, a T-section, or, 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 uh, uh, some kind of intersection of a highway. Uh, that's where they flat, they try to put their gas stations because they're getting, uh, two sources of streets coming to them. Uh, and I don't see too many places on the turnpike which the fifteen hundred foot rule would, uh, be, except the one I think they're talking about. Uh, and that's the opposite side of the road. And if it's fifteen hundred feet on the same side of the road, you know, the opposite side of the road may be just the part of the regulation.
Yeah, well, I think it's up to them if they want to try to see if they, I, I don't know. The commission feels one way or another about it, to be honest with you. So I'm gonna say, I'm remaining lukewarm. I just, we don't know. So we don't, we really aren't leaning one way or another. So Chris, that doesn't help you a lot, but hey, what are you gonna do?
Uh, oh, I, I, I appreciate it, uh, Chairwoman, because it kind of gives me, get back to them and say the commission's more than happy to consider it, but at this point, they have no definitive opinion or leaning, but they're more than welcome to do so and come through with language that they believe appropriate, and this body can then consider it.
Yep, sounds like a plan.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. And one more thing?
One more thing, okay.
No, don't.
Although I took two big things off.
I know.
So this is a building, and, and really it's only because it's in the, um, in the CCD two zone, and so therefore we have the design regulations. It's a building permit that's come through. We've talked about this building many times over the years, at least at the staff level. I don't know how much of it has come to the commission, but I got the building permit application to upgrade the building that's adjacent to Kensington Market. And with it aligning, my review, looking at it, aligning with the commission meeting. I, I thought I'd bring to you the concept and make sure, and we haven't vetted it. I haven't completely finished the vetting for the signs, signs fitting the scale and whatnot, but by visually, they certainly do fit within, you know, having looked at signs for a long, long time.
Yeah.
Um, they, they.
So they're, they're cleaning it up?
Yeah, and, um, changing the top facade. I'm just gonna do that for a minute for.
Tim.
Yeah.
Commissioners joining us by phone or by video.
I was wondering why it's not being completed.
And so they're working, I have, they started working for not, I don't know if they started working without the permit or got the permit to do certain, certain types of repairs without it being the design being done. So this is the concept plan, um, or not the concept, yeah, well, it is, it's their rendering drawing. We have the rest of the working drawings, but it's basically a uniform signage across the town with, and I just wanted to run it past you guys because it's a meeting night and that makes sense. Um, it's in the, it's in the district as opposed to whether we can do it by administrative approval for the particulars of it or not. Or if you have any specific concerns you'd like me to, to monitor.
Is it within that village Oakley district or whatever that we have to be so careful with materials?
No, I believe it's outside of that because it's outside the, the, um, short distance to the train station. That that's included in, but it is in the Farmington Avenue Design District.
Okay.
So, um, remind you that things like signage being illuminated from the exterior instead of interior illuminated is encouraged.
Yeah.
Um, we downed the regulation with a percent of white last year, um, and, and just the overall design guidelines. Any regular project you'd be looking at.
Yeah.
The, the, the architecturals as part of the site plan.
All right.
So we can handle it administratively, that's fine. If you, if you have a particular concern, you can point out to me.
Any landscaping in there, any chance of it?
I, I think it's only a building permit that they're asking for right now. Um, they haven't gone beyond that. They are not, um, seeking facade grant money, which is the other reason you've seen most, many, many of the projects on Farmington Avenue because they come to you for facade grant money. At this time, they're not seeking that.
So you would, staff would be able to just make sure that they adhere to whatever.
The design.
Things are, the design elements, that we're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
It, it was, okay.
So do we need a motion for that, or just?
No, you can just connect me that I can do it administratively.
If it administratively, just follow that and bring it back to us.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
That would be it?
And they will appreciate that, most definitely, for me.
Anything else you have?
I do believe I am done with the add-ons. Thank you very much for entertaining them.
No problem. So do, uh, we have anything from the commissioners, and we have a motion to a jury?
I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Diane. Anyone want to second her motion to a jury? Thank you, Mr. Biella. Heard of the discussion of that, and all those in favor? As opposed, so moved, and it.
Aye.
Night, Tim.
I want to give you.
Aye.
Night, Tim. Night, Adam.
Have a good night.
Bye, guys.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, yeah, hang on.